Agenda meeting to order. Imocation by Commissioner Joe Daughtry, Pledge of Allegiance, Vice Chairman Bevan Foster. I assume he's not going to be here. Tim, do you mind?
I'll be happy to.
Thank you. All right. Approval minutes. The September sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Discussion of adjustment of agenda. Do we have any adjustments?
Any adjustments, Carol?
None that I'm aware of.
No, no adjustments.
Special presentation. Limit time of six to ten minutes. Motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty two. A resolution awarding service weapon to Master Deputy Lyndon Sutton. Motion to approve twenty twenty five breast cancer awareness proclamation. Commissioner Acker will do that. Appointment committee. Motion to appoint Deborah Worley, Brian West, Jeff Parks, Valerie Barwick, Susan McLennie, and Ryan Robertson to the Voluntary Agriculture District Advisory Board, and Jennifer Johnson as ex-officio member. Unfinished business. Motion to approve amended Resolution twenty twenty five, twenty-two A, resolution by the County Wayne to direct expenditures of opioid settlement funds. Public hearing. To receive public comments on amendment to the Wayne County Electronic Gaming Operation Ordinance to remove accessory gaming and add setback restrictions for tobacco help retail operations. The Board of Commissioners may choose to take action following the public hearing.
Do we want to have an update on that at this point, or just wait till the public?
Wait till the public.
Just wait.
To receive, number eight, to receive public comment on a request to rezon ten point six two areas, acres in Brogdon Township from community shopping CS to RA twenty for property located in, at the end of Swinson Drive, identified as tack partial, two five eight five one oh nine six five six, two five eight five hundred eighty-five seventeen, twenty-five eighty-five eleven ninety forty-six, twenty-five eighty-five twenty-one zero one thirty-two, twenty-five eighty-five twenty-one eleven thirty-seven, and twenty-five eighty-five twenty-one twenty-two forty-one. The Board of Commissioners may choose to take action following public hearings. We move along to the consent agenda. Number nine. Late elderly disabled applications. Number ten. Late disabled veterans exemption of application. Number eleven. Budget amendments. Angie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll start with budget amendment number ninety-three from nine one one. The purpose of this budget amendment is to appropriate funds from the two-two-five restricted fund balance for the completion of the police Pro QA Paramount Priority Dispatch Interface and to realign funds to replace UPS batteries. Number ninety-six is from Services on Aging. The purpose of this budget amendment is to decrease SCGP funding that was allocated in the twenty-five twenty-six fiscal year. Number ninety-seven. This is also Services on Aging. This is to appropriate donated funds for housing and home improvement ramps per fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six. Number ninety-eight, also from Services on Aging. To appropriate donated funds that was received for twenty-five twenty-six. Number ninety-nine. This is from Sheriff's Office. Purpose of this budget amendment is to appropriate funds from the sale of six Sheriff's Office vehicles that were recently sold at auction. These vehicles were originally purchased using federally seized monies. Therefore, the sale proceeds must be allocated to the same line item. Number one oh one is from nine one one. Purpose of this budget amendment is to appropriate funds in the nine one one two-two-five restricted budget to maintenance contracts expenditure line to cover the cost of the APC UPS power supply for the nine one one center equipment. This represents an increase in the allowable percentage approved by the North Carolina nine one one board from previous years.
Madam Chair, I'm a little slow this morning. Going back to the auction of six vehicles, and the total received from the sale of six vehicles was twenty-two nine oh five?
That is correct. Now, there was-
They didn't get very much money for those vehicles.
Who of our bottom didn't get much vehicle news?
Well, I don't know.
That was surplus vehicles, wasn't it?
Yeah. Some of them didn't even have engines in them.
Those were six that were purchased with those funds. There were more than just six sold. Yeah.
All right.
We're on number one oh nine from Human Resources. All tuition assistance funding was, excuse me, consolidated and funded in HR department's budget. Some of the departments must have those expenses recorded in their departments for accounting purposes. The attached budget amendment realigns those funds that the Human Resources Training Account had appropriated to DSS and Health for their employees who have utilized the tuition assistance program. Number one eleven is for register of deeds. The purpose of this budget amendment is to appropriate funds to pay for the renewed COT contract from September to August of twenty-six that is now billed annually instead of monthly.
What is that contract, Ms. Angie? COT?
This is the COT contract.
Air computer system.
Computer system.
This is the online database for the register deeds. So when you go on to look up deeds, your data's in their system.
Sure hadn't had, sure hadn't had as many budget amendments on that department as we used to.
Thank you.
Number one thirteen is for facilities. This budget amendment is to appropriate grant revenue for the Jeffries Building Energy Audit. Wayne County is partnering with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to conduct an energy audit for the Jeffries Building. This will be used to install recommended upgrades, as well as an upgrade of the old HVAC system and replace the windows in the building.
Wow. How did we get, come about getting a half billion dollar grant?
Through our grant writer.
Through our grant writer? I like the answer. Good job.
He's really paid for himself.
Number one fourteen is from Finance. The purpose of this budget amendment is to allocate contingency funds to insurance and bonding. Additional funds are needed to cover the insurance broker services that is provided by A.J. Gallagher. Number one fifteen from Services on Aging. This is to reappropriate the increase in the health promotions grant that is allocated for twenty-five twenty-six. Number one eighteen. This is from Animal Control. This is to reappropriate twenty-four twenty-five donations to the twenty-five twenty-six budget and to appropriate these donations for the purchase of raised kennel floors at Animal Control.
So we've got to raise the floors.
It's a more sanitary way for the animals to be, instead of being on paper newspaper, which is hard to get, you know, enough newspaper for them to use. These types of floors don't require newspaper and are more sanitary.
Okay, okay.
And finally, number one nineteen. This is from the Sheriff's Office. This is to appropriate JAG or Justice Assistance Grant Funds in order to purchase water rescue vests and rope throw bags for all officers. That's all.
Thank you, Angie.
Moving along, number twelve. Motion to approve a preliminary plat for Pine Brook subdivision. Mary, we found some more.
Yes, our, the first one today is a preliminary plat. So with it being a preliminary, of course, is the start of the process. It will come back to you as a final plat in the future once all improvements are in and complete. This is, they're proposing thirty-one lots. This is on Pineview Cemetery Road, near the intersection with Price Road. So it's kind of south, south end of the county, southeast, near Seven Springs. Average lot size is about twenty-five thousand square feet, so about six tenths of an acre. Planning Board has reviewed this and does recommend approval.
Is this, this mobile home or stick built?
This is a stick built. Any questions? The next one I have is Franklin Landing. This is a final plat. So with this being final, it is the last part of the process for subdivision. So all improvements are complete with this subdivision. There are fifty-seven lots with this. It's on Pikeville Princeton Road, kind of halfway between Catsbridge and Gurley Dairy. So it's on that western end, western side of Pikeville Princeton Road. Average lot size, and this one's about forty-five thousand square feet, so close to an acre average lot size. We do have a bill of standards letter from DOT, so the road does meet their minimum standards. And then we have sent it to Planning Board, and Planning Board does recommend approval.
You're quite familiar with this one, aren't you?
Yeah. Yep.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Barry.
Number fourteen. Motion to establish a public hearing on October twenty-first at nine thirty a.m. in the Commissioner's meeting room to receive public comments on economic development agreement between Wayne County and Wayne County Development Alliance to construct a fifty thousand square foot shell building on Lot seven A at the Park East Industrial Park. Number fifteen. Any questions?
Yeah, I can go over that real quick. So if you recall, our last two shell buildings, we're under contract now to sell them. That was the Project Istanbul, or Pelson is the name of the company. So those were our last two shell buildings, and we're in the process of closing on those, so we'll have proceeds left over. The next project out in Park East would be Lot six and then seven A. So those are the two remaining vacant lots that we have out there. So WCDAs would like to move forward with construction of another fifty thousand square foot shell building on seven A. And that's, if you're going down Chalene Court, that'd be to your right, just inside the power lines that go across that lot. So the, the way that this is structured is the county would convey the site to WCDAs. They would oversee construction like they've done for other shell buildings in the park. And then we would take, the anticipated cost of the building is three point five million. The county would use the proceeds from the sale of Pelson of the two shell buildings when that closes and contribute it to this project. But WCDAs would own the property, oversee the project, and before they were to sell anything, they would have to come to you and get your concurrence on any sales price. They would have the option as well to contribute any of their impact dollars if they so chose, if that was something WCDAs wanted to do.
I do have a question. This is the first time I've seen the division of Lot seven. Who determined, who determined the division of this property?
That was the railroad. So when, if you recall, the spur has to go across Lot seven to get to Lot nine for the project that's going for Team Foods USA. And so that division, we needed to deed that property over to the railroad. And what they're named as seven B is the railroad spur right now. So we, we own seven A, or seven A and seven C, and then the railroad owns seven B, which is the spur.
Well, okay, let me rephrase that then. I was looking at the lines here and evidently misread that. We wanted to take the remaining acreage that we have of seven and divide it to where we can build two shell buildings on seven.
Correct. And this is the first one.
And this survey does not show that.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right, that's right. So we would ideally put, the plan right now is to put two shell buildings on seven A, but this is just for the first shell building.
Right. But at some point, we're going to have to go ahead and divide out the remaining property.
Yeah, we will.
So you're going to do that before we construct to determine where that line's going to be?
Probably. It was not done with the last two shell buildings until we had a firm buyer about where the property line would be drawn. I don't know if that's the route he wants to go, or if,
Right.
or if we need to go ahead and pre-divide it.
I think the, the thought is-
Record it, but we need to determine where that line's going to be.
The thought is you might have a buyer that'll come in and want everything, so you don't have to. So we were just going to kind of wait and see how that-
And that's fine. As long as we predetermined, though, where that line would be. Products from the, the actual railroad to trucking. I don't know what they call that, but are we, are we in discussions with the railroad for that or, or not?
I think it's ongoing. I mean, I, I think that's a possibility. I don't think anything is, is firm on that yet.
Okay, so we haven't firmed up anything. All right, good enough. So what we're doing today is just approving one of the fifty thousand.
You're just setting the public hearing, and then you'll approve it at your next meeting for one of the buildings, yes?
I admire, I know I'm raising a lot of questions here, but I thought our intention was to build two shell buildings, both at the same time, in order to save dollars. Are we abandoning that and only building one?
No. But this is the way Marx admitted. I think he submitted this before we convinced him that we're going to build two, or try to build two, yeah.
I thought he was aware of that, that.
At first, he was not.
So we're going to go forth with a public hearing on building one, and then if we decide to go with the two, we'll just have another public hearing.
Yeah, you can do an amendment to this agreement and work out the financing. I, I think the, the thought is, right now, we've got, we will have cash in hand to build one. We don't have cash in hand to build, in theory.
Agreed. But we saw how successful it was by having two shell buildings, number one. Number two, we are now in competition with Duplin County, because Duplin County has got two fifty thousand square foot shell buildings. So we would need to have something to be competitive.
Very good there.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we're moving towards.
All right.
Think about it, Jim.
All right, number fifteen. Motion to approve the sale of county-owned timber on Lot six and seven at the Park East Industrial Park.
So this is in the same area we were just talking about, but this would be Lot six. Lot six is to the left when you go down Chalene Court. It's currently all wooded. So for us to start development on that, we need to go ahead and get it cleared. We had put out feelers for- We had put out feelers for trying to submit offers and had a hard time even getting anybody to come in to put in an offer on the timber. My understanding is it's not good quality. We did have somebody that offered $2,000. That was one of the few people who actually offered us money to go in there. Everybody else wanted us to charge them to go in there and take the timber out.
But that's 69 acres, so I just don't understand that low amount.
This, this, Lot 6 is like six...
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at over here, it says, the proposed request to harvest the timber is 69.71 acres, located on Gateway Drive and Industrial Park, so...
I think that they just included all of Lot 7 in that as well, but Lot 7's already cleared. There's some thoughts that they might be able to go around the outside of Lot 7 and get some of that timber too. So the acreage listed that, that large, but its majority is Lot 6, since Lot 7's already cleared.
Still seems kind of low, you know? I mean, I think we should try to, you know, see if there's some other options with someone that wanna come in and maybe give us a better offer.
If, if you all do approve this, we have to advertise it, and we have to accept upset bids, so there will be an upset bid process. We're not locked into this. And if you all would like us to, if, if you're not satisfied with it, we can advertise it, and you all still have the ability to reject all the bids if you want as well. So if you want to modify this, that we come back to you after the upset bids, we can do... I mean, if there is an upset bid, we have to come back anyway. But you, you're still within your authority after the upset bid period to reject everything, if that's what you want to do.
I'm like Commissioner Williams, I, I think it's kind of low, $2,000.
That's a sorry timber. If it, if it's not the $2,000, it's some sorry, sorry stuff. I'm gonna tell you.
Your acreage is...
Yeah, what's the acreage again, Andrew?
Lot 6 is 11.83 acres.
Right, but how much of it is timber?
All of Lot 6. But there's very little timber on Lot 7, just around the edge.
But in the offer, he included the acreage, the option to reject the 2,000 if you wanted to.
I think it'd be wise.
Was there any consideration given, and please forgive me, because I've not looked into it, as to how a lot is supposed to be left? Are they supposed to completely clear cut?
There's gonna be stumps on there.
There will be stumps, it will not be grobed.
It won't be grobed.
We'll have to come back with a grob in the contract.
There were some offers for us to pay someone, I believe it was 17 to $20,000, and they would clear cut it and leave it in much better shape. But if they're gonna pay us, no, it won't be. It still needs some work.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Go ahead and do that now.
I move into closed session.
Have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Dalton to go in closed session.
That would be to discuss matters relating to location or expansions of industries, to consult with your attorney, to retain attorney-client privilege, and to discuss the qualifications, competence, performance of an employee.
Uh, we have to, sir, we have to clear the room. We have a closed session. It won't take long. Thank you.
Thank you.
The votes didn't pop up.
Mine did.
Yours did?
Mine didn't.
There it is.
There it is.
Thank you, Kayla.
Getting back into the swing of things.
Forgot how to do it there for a moment.
I, I voted, but, yeah, I said...
We are now at a closed session.
You can just recess.
We will take a recess until nine o'clock. Good morning. I now open the October 7th regular board meeting. The invocation will be Commissioner Joe Daughtry.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to gather and serve our county. We ask for your guidance and wisdom in all that we do during this meeting. Grant us clarity of thought, fairness in judgment, and unity in purpose. Keep us mindful of the responsibility entrusted to us and help us to lead with humility and respect for one another. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Daughtry.
Major Bledgetts, Commissioner Foster.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united nations under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, approval minutes for September 16th, 2025.
I approve the minutes of September 16th, 2025.
Commissioner Daughtry, do we have any adjustments of the agenda?
Yes.
Hold on, we got one more, one more vote. One more vote? Okay.
That's what's due to the agenda. We do have one. Under our consent agenda, item number 16, motion for the county to fund federally funded health department programs for the duration of the federal government shutdown and with an appropriate budget amendment. And that is it.
And that is under consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Grumper, would you like to take over?
Let me make a motion that we approve the adjusted agenda.
Is that motion by you, Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving along to special presentations, item number three is a motion to adopt resolution 2025-32, a resolution awarding service weapon to Master Deputy Lyndon Sutton.
Sheriff, I got a question for you. Your haircut and coat, I mean, everybody fits except you.
I'll ask Mr. Lyndon Sutton to join me up here and have a resolution I request you adopt. A resolution awarding service weapon to Master Deputy Lyndon Sutton, whereas Deputy Lyndon Sutton retired from the Wayne County effective October 1st, 2025, and whereas Lyndon Sutton had been employed of the Wayne County Sheriff's Office and retires as a master deputy, and whereas Lyndon Sutton served 11 years with the Sheriff's Office in Wayne County, whereas throughout his years he earned the admiration, respect, and friendship of those with whom he worked and came into contact, now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 20187.2, hereby awards retired master deputy Lyndon Sutton his service weapon in exchange for consideration of of $1 and awards him his badge. Now therefore it be further resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioner extends best wishes for many years of good health and happiness to Lyndon Sutton during his retirement and his future endeavors, adopted this the 7th day of October 2025, Barbara Acoff, Chairwoman, Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
Questions?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
So at this time I'd like to present Deputy Sutton, a plaque in recognition of his service. Deputy Sutton actually retired as superintendent from Cliffs of the News Park back some years ago, and then he came to work for us and has given us 11 years of meritorious service, and he was going to come back and help us part-time, so continues to serve our county well. It says, presented to Lyndon Sutton in recognition and appreciation of years of loyal and dedicated service to Wayne County Sheriff's Office, August 1st, 2014 through October 1st, 2025, presented by Sheriff Larry M. Pierce. Congratulations, sir. And in addition to that, this is a service weapon that you carry in protection of Wayne County citizens. It says Deputy Lyndon Sutton, for meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism, thank you you have demonstrated during your career. Your presence will be missed, but your accomplishments will not be forgotten. Again, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Yes.
You don't do good.
Well, it's my second retirement, you know, and time just goes so fast, you know, and I always say when you find something that you love to do, you call it work, you know, that's your passion. So it's a blood thing, so I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Moving along to item number four is a motion to approve the 2025 Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation.
Commissioner.
Madam Chair, 2025 Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation. Whereas breast cancer touches every corner of the United States and hundreds of thousands of Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer and tens of thousands will die from it, and whereas about 1 in 8 women born today in the United States will get breast cancer at some point in their lifetime, approximately 2,700 men are diagnosed with breast cancer each year, and whereas we show our support for every individual and every family struggling with breast cancer and we pause to remember those who have lost, whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer by getting mammograms and encouraging our community organizations, churches, families, individuals to get involved, and whereas we salute the women and men who dedicate themselves to prevention, detection, and treatment as observed Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim October 9th of 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Wayne County, and then encourage all citizens to join activities that will increase awareness of what we can do to prevent breast cancer, adopted this date, the 7th day of October 2025, Barbara Acoff, Chairwoman.
Would you like to add something to that, Commissioner Daughtry?
Yes, ma'am. It's, this is very personal to me. You see, we're about 1% of breast cancer is in males, but I was fortunate enough to be in that 1%. And there's so many different kinds of cancer now, but thank God if you're going to have cancer, you know, look at the bright side, don't always look at the dark side. Breast cancer is a cancer now that they can, they can deal with. I mean, there's no, there's no cure, but they can deal with it and extend a person's life by many years. So far it has extended mine 14 years. My cancer has come back most, from what my doctor says, most males that have breast cancer, it comes back in your bones, and that's what mine has done, but we're fighting it every day, and I've got confidence in my doctors and doctors all over, all over the world that is working on this problem. But there again, you know, breast cancer is, it's a terrible cancer, but at least it's one that, that they are beginning to get a handle on. No one, no one's got an answer for why men and women have breast cancer. It's, it's just, it's, or any kind of cancer as far as that goes, but some say it's lifestyle, some say it's just fate, but like I say, I was, it was unfortunate that I had cancer, but I did have one that they could work with, and like I say, I was cancer-free for 14 years, and it, and it has come back, and we're on top of it. It's not going to go away, but I hope to have many more years, you know, hope to continue to serve the county of Wayne, but at some point, if my cancer is standing in the way of me conducting business for the county of Wayne, I assure you I will reside and we'll put somebody that can give it 100%. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Acoff.
That's in the form of a motion, sir?
That's the form of a motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for that vote. Moving along now to number five is our appointment committee, a motion to appoint Deborah Worley, Brad West, Jeff Parks, Valerie Barwick, Sue McLennie, and Ryan Robertson to the Voluntary Agricultural District Advisory Board, and Jennifer Johnson as an ex officio member.
That's in the form of a motion.
Correct.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I could have another second or two.
Yes, sir.
Taking effect today, I am resigning from the appointment committee. I think we've got six more people who's qualified to take that position, and effective today, I'm resigning from the appointment committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Acoff.
Moving on to unfinished business, we have a motion to approve amended Resolution 2025-22, a resolution by the county of Wayne to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds.
This is an amendment to the resolution that you all passed in July, it's July 15th. Once we pass opioid resolutions, we have to upload it to a database, and that gets reviewed by the North Carolina Department of Justice, as long as the Association of County Commissioners. We received some feedback about that resolution. Most of them were some minor ones, but there was one substantial that they wanted us to change and have, and bring back to you all for approval. The biggest change was they determined that the use of funds for the lead juvenile detective that was awarded, that that is not allowed under option A, under early intervention, and the explanation we received was early intervention has to be specifically targeted to juveniles who have a history of opioid abuse, so it can't be something that's all encompassing, you know, you have to actually target. So it was determined that that was not an eligible expense. We would have to go through the collaboration process in option B in order to do that. The good news is we hadn't expended any of those funds, so we weren't out any of money, and I think the, your managers are in the process of working with the Sheriff's Office to see if there's other funding available. So that would be the first change, and then the, the remaining ones are somewhat minor. To the award for four-day movement, they asked some language to be amended to specify that it's targeting people with a history of opioid use, so that change was made. They asked for clarification in the award to COM to show that the, their overdose prevention was specifically associated with opioid use, so we made that change. The Health Department award was improperly labeled as recovery support services. It should have been post overdose response team. We made that change, and then the last one was the award to IMS. We had put, our contract starts with them on July 1st of each year, so that was the start date. Since the resolution wasn't passed to the 15th, we needed to change the award date on that, so relatively minor, so we made those changes and then did, did the amended resolution. So that changed the total award to $2,354,675. So that's a summary of all the changes. This is the first one that we've done that we have, we've received feedback on, but they said that they'd be willing to work with us on that lead program, but they just needed us to go ahead and amend the resolution right now.
So the changes basically were to make it more specific.
To opioid. Correct. So the other, the other four changes, nothing was wrong. We didn't award those incorrectly. They just wanted some clarifying language, and so what I'll do is I'll take this, once it's signed, submit it back into the database so that they can correct it, and this was already run, this new version was run by the Department of Justice, and they were okay with all of our changes, so this has been approved.
Who awards these funds to us?
This is the opioid settlement funds. Yep, out of the class action lawsuit.
That flows through?
Through the county.
Through the county?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Do we already have these funds?
We have a substantial amount of them. There's different settlements, so the wave one was over the course of 18 years, and then as we reach settlements with Walmart and some of the pharmacies, those are paid on different schedules, but I can email out that sked, that payment schedule.
Well, I guess my question is, this is, this is funding that's not affected by the federal shutdown.
No, no, sir. Mm-mm. No, sir. This is separate.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve amended Resolution 2025-22, a resolution for the county of Wayne to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
All righty, thank you for that vote. It might be in quiet now, 30, we'll move ahead to our consent agenda and look for approval of that from you, as we went over in our agenda briefing.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we approve the consent agenda to include item 16, a motion for the county to fund federally funded health department program.
Can you elaborate a little bit? Can you elaborate a little bit?
Elaborate on the...
On item 16.
Item 16.
Yeah.
That motion was for the county to fund federally funded health department programs for the duration of the federal government shutdown and the appropriate budget amendment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Daughtry.
Okay, thank you for that vote, and we'll move on to our new business, and this is a request for motion to approve a contribution amount for Impact Wayne for years 2026 to 2030, and this is with the Wayne County Development Alliance Impact Wayne Fundraising Program. I'll give you the background on it. The Development Alliance, the WCDIA Incorporated, is a cooperative public-private nonprofit organization providing the lead in economic development initiatives for the advancement of Wayne County and its citizens. Impact Wayne is a five-year investment campaign for public and private fundraising commitments. The financial commitments are used for the implementation of Wayne County Development Alliance's five-year strategic plan, and the five-year strategic plan pursues opportunities to build products available industrial buildings and sites, and collaborate with allies to attract new companies and assist existing industries with the expansion in Wayne County. Initiatives in the five-year plan include product development to provide available space needed to attract new businesses and remain competitive. Business development and marketing strengthen recruitment and external marketing, creating the greatest opportunity for attracting prospects to Wayne County. Business retention and expansion to work with existing industries assisting in their success and resulting growth in jobs and investment in Wayne County. Investor relations and development maintaining a line of communication with these investors that keeps them connected and engaged with the Impact Wayne Plan and their success. WCDIA is planning for commitment from its partners, members. The request is for a commitment from Wayne County of $250,000 for the five-year period in total. That is a commitment of $50,000 per year. The previous campaign, Wayne County participated at a level of $150,000 for the five years, which was a $30,000 commitment level. Since this is in upcoming fiscal years, no budget amendments are needed at this time, but this is up for your discussion and approval so we can make a commitment during their fundraising campaign. And attached in your agenda is also their investment pledge form that you can see. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the contribution amount for Impact Wayne for the years 26 through 30.
Do you have a motion on the floor? Commissioner Daughtry?
Something's not working.
It worked. Oh, I'm so sorry. Pass, the motion passed four to two.
Okay. Thank you for that. Fill that out.
We do have, Mr. Crumpler, we do have one person for public comments. You'd like to go to Doc?
We have time for that.
Yes, sir.
So we'll pull a public comment, period.
Mr. Bobby Clayton?
I tried to get here early to give this to Mr. Harold so that he could follow along.
Yes, sir. Please.
We can give it to the...
Okay. My name is Bobby Clayton. I live at 107 Friendswood Drive in the Rosewood Community. I'm contacting Mr. Harold today on behalf of the residents of the Friendswood subdivision to see if you can help us or give us some guidance as to what to do about the bad situation we have. On July the 5th, 2024, the house at 2,000 Friendswood Drive was destroyed by fire. The home is owned by Michelle Weeks. I think Ms. Weeks now lives in Smithville or maybe Chapel Hill. The house and the property seem to have been abandoned. Not only is it an eyesore, I think it's a safety hazard to the neighborhood. After talking with several people in the subdivision, I agreed to give her a call about the home. I talked with Ms. Weeks in March of 2025 about the burned house. She told me she was talking with her insurance company and a contractor. She had a plan to tear down the house and sell the lot. I was told it would be done in about two months. By May, nothing had been done, so I contacted her again and told her I knew someone who would tear down the house. She told me that she had someone lined up and it would be done soon. By the end of June, still nothing had been done, and I contacted her again. Our cordial relationship ended by her telling me not to contact her again. I have not contacted her since, and she hasn't done anything about the... I have not contacted her since, and she hasn't done anything about the burned-down house. It's been 15 months, and a burned-down house is still there. We were wondering what should we do next? Maybe a call from you or a letter from the county attorney? Or can the county condemn the house, tear it down, and send her to build so that we'll get this out of our neighborhood? Any help, thoughts, or suggestions from you would be appreciated. Judge Minshew lives in the subdivision, and I asked him, I said, why don't you just call her up and tell her you're going to lock her up? And of course, he said he couldn't do that. But I gave Mr. Harold the...
Yes, sir.
Same thing I just told y'all, and he's got some pictures there, so.
Thank you. Chip, would that fall under the situation, like one that's condemned by the state or something? Or is that a whole different program?
We're aware of it.
Inspections.
Yeah, inspections is aware of it. I'm aware of the particular house, too. Sometimes those, and I don't know where her status of her insurance is, but sometimes those insurances are slow on paying to tear down, especially if it's under investigation of the cause or the source of the fire.
I've been in touch with our inspections department about it, and I will follow up with them.
You know, we really didn't know what to do and didn't know where to go, so...
Right. I've made some phone calls, too.
This is one of the avenues. Okay.
We'll follow up on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for giving us a very up-to-date, a good report. I mean, it was...
Thanks, sir. And so are about your camps.
That was professional.
How about your camps?
Yes, sir. God's good all the time.
Thank you.
We can go ahead and have county manager, I mean, I'm, Commissioner Committee reports, if you would like. We've still got four minutes.
Do you have one?
I'm gonna pass it.
So you're passing on yours?
Yes, go ahead. If I have something, I'll come back.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Williams?
No comment.
Commissioner Daughtry?
A day that we need to spend some time. I have no comment.
Mr. Aco?
Yes, ma'am. Sounds like it's been all about me today, but about three weeks ago, I fell. I was over at Rosewood, at Rosewood Garden Center. I fell and messed my arm up pretty bad. I mean, pretty bad. The owner, Monde, called, gave 911. Dave Junior from Rosewood come pick me up, and I was, I was real concerned about the bleeding that my arm was, was putting out. And we got to the hospital, and they had already been told by my doctor, by all means, do not break a bone. And that hadn't even crossed my mind. My arm's the only thing I was thinking about. And we were in the ER, and it was either my daughter or my wife one mentioned to the ER doctor that I had bone cancer. He reached back and grabbed a roll of gauze, wrapped my arm up. He said, we'll worry about that later. He said, get him the x-ray. I want a picture of every bone in his body. And I just, I want to commend Dave's crew for what they did and the ER doctor. I mean, they were, they were, God knows they were professionals. But that, that doctor did, I mean, just as soon as he found out I had bone cancer, he grabbed me about some gauze, and he said, we'll worry about that later. And they run me through about every machine at the hospital, and thank God that I did not have any broken bones. But I just, but I want to commend Dave and his crew. I don't know what their names were or nothing, but they were first-class professionals. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just would like to again say thank you to Deputy Sutton for his 11 years of service with the Sheriff's Department and helping to keep our citizens safe. And sounds like his dedicated service to our parks system, too, from his, his first retirement. I've had interactions with Deputy Sutton in the past from my school time. He was always very cordial and very pleasant, very professional. So wish him the best and, as the resolution said, great health in the future. Also, just piggybacking on Mr. Wayne, my mother is a two-time cancer survivor. She's had non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, and the dentist caught her non-Hodgkin's lymphoma with the oral cancer exams that the dentist does. And her dentist actually helped her to get an appointment the next day. And you know, the cancer word is something that scares us all. And I remember my mother talking to the cancer doctor, and he said, you want the good news or the bad news first? And of course, she said, well, give me the bad news. And he said, well, without treatment, you've got just a couple of months to live. And she said, well, what's the good news? He said, well, the good news is the type of cancer you have, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma responds very well to treatment. So she's been obviously in remission from that for years. And the other thing, she's a breast cancer survivor. And that was caught through her having regular mammograms as advised by, by her doctor. So, you know, I would encourage, as we think about cancer awareness and breast cancer awareness for all of us, especially us men folk, we're very stubborn sometimes when it comes to wanting to go to the doctor and whether we want to hear good news or bad news. But sometimes that ounce of prevention, right, can, can really keep us around here for many more years and keep us in good health. And Mr. Wayne, you are in our, our prayers, sir, as always, and we appreciate everything that you are doing and have done for our county, and not just for our county, but just citizens in general that some of us will probably never even know. So we appreciate you. And Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
No comment.
Madam Chair, I would thank you, Commissioner Harold. It's, it's, it's very touching. These people all over this county that know me, and I don't know them. I mean, these people walk up to me on the street or in a restaurant, I don't have a clue who they are. And they say, Miss Aco, we're praying for you. And that's one of the most humbling feelings that anybody can ever have, for someone that you don't have a clue who they are. And it's, now, I'm sorry to take up so much time about me today, but it's, it's, it's a challenge every day. And I'm not going over.
We're not going to allow you to. Thank you, Commissioner Aco. And like Commissioner Harold said, congratulations to Deputy Sutton for all he did and coming back and helping us support the Sheriff's Department as well. We need good officers. Also, I'd like to offer prayers for Randy Fields' family. I worked with Randy for many, many years. He was a fine, fine gentleman, one of the nicest guys I've ever met. Always the same attitude, always even keeled. We worked together for about 20 years at Standard Products, and it was such a shock to hear about him passing. Good man, good man.
Madam Chair, I'll interrupt one more time. His wife retired from the county. She worked over in the inspections department, uh, Bonney Inspections.
Yes, sir.
She retired from the county, and, you know, it is a good family, good family.
I think one of the nicest things that his mother is in her 90s, and every Sunday they watched the sermon from the hymn on prayers and everything. I know she's, the family's just broken-hearted. Also, I have a card here from Jimmy Edmison's family. Dear Commissioners, thank you for remembering Jimmy with the beautiful mixed flyer arrangements. He had many years and many memories with this board. He is at peace. Hugs, Donna Edmison. And Commissioner Aco, you have made a lot of gentlemen aware of breast cancer. I remember years ago, men, I mean, that wasn't even a thing on the radar was men with breast cancer. So you guys, keep that in mind because it can happen to you as well.
Just, just keep one more thing involved, too. A man getting a mammogram, they ain't got nothing to work with.
Well, they usually find something.
They stretch everything. You're gonna be stretched now, but they got it due.
You know what us ladies go through now. That's all I have.
Okay. It's time now for our 9:30 public hearing. We'll go to item number seven. It's to receive public comments on an amendment to the Wayne County Electronic Gaming Operations Ordinance to remove accessory gaming and add setback restrictions for tobacco slash hemp retail operations. The Board of Commissioners may choose to take action following the public hearing. And I'll turn it over to Barry.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
This item is in regards to our current Electronic Gaming Operations Ordinance that we currently have in place. And that ordinance, as it's written, requires that electronic gaming operations be set back 1,000 feet from specific uses such as churches, residences, daycare, schools, those type of facilities. There's a setback requirement for those. Our ordinance also currently allows for accessory gaming operations where you can have up to two machines within an existing business. They don't have to meet the same setback. So what we're doing is asking that you remove that so that that accessory gaming requirement or allowance, and that way they would also have to meet the same 1,000-foot setback as any other gaming operation. And then we're also asking that you add in to tobacco and hemp retail operations to that ordinance to apply the same 1,000-foot setback. This is, I think, already been done in Goldsboro. They have varying setbacks for theirs. Other counties have already put this in place as well, so we're looking to add that to our current ordinance for tobacco and hemp retail operations. Any questions on that?
Is there a reason that we're changing this? I mean, is there...
Well, we've had, we're looking at a lot of interest in the county for, for facilities, for these type of places. Right now, they're limited. We only have, I think, just one out in the county jurisdiction, but we're getting a lot of inquiries now, and it seems to be kind of the new thing about. And with the type of product and type of facility it is, we feel like it's best that there be some restrictions there in terms of how close they are to schools, residences, places like that, where the public gather to give that separation for those.
Any questions for Barry? Thank you, Barry.
Do you need to open the public hearing?
Do we need to what?
Open the public hearing.
All right, I now open the public hearing. Each speaker will have a time limit of four minutes. Do we have anybody?
No.
No one stand up?
Just close it then, and then you can, the board can take action after that.
Madam Flair. I mean, Madam Chair, this, this really doesn't change the restrictions a whole lot, does it? I mean, it, it is basically the same, about the same. In fact, doesn't it give them a little more leeway than, than the old restriction?
Well, it, it's, it's pretty similar, but with, in terms of the electronic gaming, nothing's really changing with that, except the accessory, you know, making those where they would have to meet the 1,000-foot requirement. So nothing's really changing with the electronic gaming part of it, the actual facilities themselves. And really, the main change is going to be with the tobacco and hemp facilities, them having to be that 1,000 feet. So it, there's a lot of wording change in the ordinance, but a lot of it's just wording, where we're adding the term tobacco and hemp, things like that. But in terms of change of regulation, it's really just adding that 1,000 feet for tobacco and hemp and applying it to accessory uses as well.
I just, I just don't, I don't use the machines and all, but I don't, I don't want to restrict the business owners from, you know, having privileges or whatever the ordinance is, just, you know, they got a right to run a business as long as it's run like it's supposed to be. I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah. And the business itself should be fine, but the machines, as long as, as long as it's 1,000 feet from those type of...
And it's already that way, right?
For regular, for your actual full-fledged electronic gamings, it is already that way.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the changes to Section 18, 151.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Mr. Williams? Is that it?
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you for that vote. Moving along to number eight, and the second public hearing is to receive public comments on a request to rezone 10.62 acres in the Brogdon Township from community shopping, CS RA20 for property located at the end of Swinson Drive, identifies tax parcels The Board of Commissioners may choose to take action following the public hearing.
This is a rezoning request. This is out on Swinson Drive, as mentioned. It's right where Swinson Drive dead ends at 117 in the Dudley area, south of Goldsboro. You can see, I don't know if you can pull up the map, Harold?
Absolutely. Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. But the request is to rezone community shopping, the area that's community shopping, and you see that on the screen in the blue or outlined in red. That area is for commercial use only, and it really abuts this 300-foot area along Highway 117. You see there Swinson Drive to the left, there's some homes along Swinson Drive. There's some more homes there now. This is aerial photo, it's probably about two years old. But, but the area to the south, if you'll scroll back up just a little bit, Harold, there you go. You can see behind those homes is RA20, that yellow, so it's already zoned right behind the homes for residential use. And so you see there further back, closer up to 117, you see the community shopping for commercial use there in the back. So the applicant is requesting that those properties be, or that what's CS back there be zoned to residential, RA20, the same as what it is up towards the front as well.
Has it always been CS?
Not always, no. This was, this was established probably, I don't know, 15, 15 years ago. Basically, it was just done mainly along the highway corridors to, for billboards. Billboards have to be in a commercially zoned or industrially zoned area. So there are no billboards in this section right here, so it wouldn't impact that. So, yeah, this is probably established, like I said, 15, 20 years ago, so.
So it wouldn't affect the billboards that are already there? Are there...
There's none in that, that particular area right there, so it wouldn't have any...
It would prevent any future billboards from going there as well.
I didn't have to have the ones from the grandfathered in if they were there.
And this request is by the property owner.
Right.
Any questions?
That was recommended by the planning board.
You'll need to open the public hearing. Yes, sir. Yeah, planning board did recommend it.
You will need to open the public hearing at this point.
All right. I now open the public hearing to receive comment on the rezone 10.62 acres in the Brogdon Township. Do we have anybody to sign up?
Now you can close it.
All right, I close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning request.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Daughtry. Thank you, Barry.
I'm sorry, I didn't read all those tax numbers.
No, why not?
All righty, thank you for that. That concludes everything we have. We have no further closed session, so you can adjourn the meeting if you're pleased.
All right. Any more questions from the board before we close? Okay. I close the meeting. Thank you. Thank you.